Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 6th meeting of the Los Gatos Town Council. Can we get a roll call, please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Sayoc.
Here.
Councilmember Rennie.
Here.
Councilmember Spector.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jensen.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Leonardis.
Here. I would like to invite up Julia and Olivia Leonardis to say us, lead us in the pledge These are two ladies that I've had the good fortune of knowing their whole lives. Come on over. And they've grown up in Los Gatos. In the schools, they volunteered in the community, they participated in the sports leagues, and they have done very well in school. I'm very proud as their father. So, tonight is kind of a family night because it was my father's birthday. He would have been 86 years old. And he is the reason why I am in Los Gatos, part of the reason. And they are essentially third-generation Los Gattans. And I was thinking about it, and Olivia is the age 17 when I arrived in Los Gatos. So, I will not embarrass them any further. Would you like to help me out saying the pledge of allegiance?
Do I hold it? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for coming in. And would you please shake hands with the other council members? I like what you did there. That's, that's great. It was a little confusing. Julia has a dislocated shoulder, so she has to do everything left-handed. How about a big round of applause? Those two fine young members of our community. Thank you very much. Next up is our consent calendar. Does any member of council wish to pull an item from consent? Seeing none, does any member of the public wish to pull an item from consent? Seeing none, we could, do we have a motion? Vice Mayor.
I move to approve the consent calendar consisting of items 1 through 10. Do I need to mention the changes to item 7, including my motion, the desk item, if you will, on item 7?
We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. It passes unanimously. Moving on to verbal communications. If anybody wishes to speak this evening, please fill out a card located in the benches. We have one card for verbal. It is from Roseanne Quennaville. Kennaville, would you please come forward?
Yes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rosie Kennaville. I live in Los Gatos. I've lived here for 23 years in Redwood Estates. I'm here to address a couple of things. I guess I'm going to start with the traffic in 17 in general, because I have three grandchildren I take to school every day, three different schools, and all winter long, there were accidents. And I had an idea that the police department could get together with the Santa Cruz Police Department and kind of do your little thing, escort people down, and then turn around and come back, so we wouldn't all be killing each other and being on the mountain for hours while the tow truck and the ambulance and everybody else showed up, you know? Another thing that really bothers me about 17 is I go to Santa Cruz a lot, and it's just beautiful, nice and smooth. Ours looks like a patchwork quilt. I can't even play a CD in my car without it doing this, you know? It's a shame that we have such a mess on 17, and I know the beach traffic doesn't help. It doesn't help with real estate down in Los Gatos. A realtor can't even do an open house because nobody could get to it, and that's a problem. The other issue I have is, I wrote down today, my granddaughter and I, 16 businesses that I know of have left Los Gatos. And I know a lot of it is Amazon, you know, and they don't do the brick and mortar anymore. But a real lot of it is, is the landlords are very greedy. The rent is so high, and you can't do business in Los Gatos with what they want. I've heard more and more people complain about it. I've worked in four different places here in Los Gatos. I modeled for four years at Besos from 2010 to 2014, and her rent then was $4,300 a month. How many pairs of thongs can you sell for $4,300 a month? I mean, come on, you guys. Opa closed, CB Hannigan's, Delmas, J. Crew, Yellow Brick Road, Sierra toy store a couple of weeks ago. It just goes on and on. And a lot of it, I understand, you know, Amazon's taken over the world, but the landlords have got to really look at what they're charging people. It's very, very expensive. And then, one way into, you know, off the freeway and the parklets, I don't know if that's going to help if nobody's down there shopping anymore. And tonight, I was at a residence-only outing up in Redwood Estates, and we were talking about it, and one of the ladies was telling me that even Safeway is hurting because people just won't come down. I myself go to Scotts Valley because I don't want to deal with the traffic, you know?
This is Ms. Kennaville.
Yes.
Your three minutes are up, but you may have questions from the council.
Oh, you have questions for me?
Possibly. Does any member of council have a question? Seeing none, thank you for coming and sharing your viewpoints this evening.
That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale Miller, 115 Newell Court. I'm the guy that keeps sending all the photos on Newell Avenue issues. I'd like to speak on the pedestrian safety on Newell Avenue, Newell Court. If you're familiar with the old Elks Club that was redone, there are no sidewalks in this area. Newell Avenue is a horseshoe with three cul-de-sacs off it. And right now, especially in the summertime, there's a lot of parking on both sides of the street, partially from courtside, partially from commuters that park there all day long. And the issues typically happen Monday through Friday, 7 to 7. Weekends are about 9 to 4. But the issue comes down to that with cars parked on both sides, depending if they're parked correctly or not, you cannot legally, you cannot really walk and not have a car come by and you have to, somebody has to stop, whether it's the person walking the dog, walking the kids, or they're going to get run over. So, I look at some proposed alternatives for this. The real issue is courtside. Courtside has taken up all the parking along Winchester. There's about 20 cars typically all day long on Winchester. There's about between 10 to 15 cars that are typically either courtside members or courtside employees. Courtside has told their employees to park on Newell Avenue, not in their overflow parking. The real issue would be for them to either limit their membership for primetime to the number of allotted parking spots they have on-site, or, and including their overflow parking lot, or they need to take out a tennis court or two to allow for more parking. At one point, they were trying to do valet parking, but for about two weeks ago, they've stopped that again, so there's more cars back on Newell Avenue. The other option is, is similar to around the high school, you park, post a 90-minute max parking on both sides of Newell Avenue. That's between the old Elks Club and the courtside overflow parking. Or, as the Elks hopefully gets developed and the property gets built out, there should be no parking on the south side at all. So, appreciate somebody to look at this and look at the parking, and if you come out and come up with a suggestion, I would appreciate it, and I know the neighbors would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We have a question for you.
So, my question is, this direction. For the solutions, you didn't mention put in a sidewalk. What if we put in a sidewalk on one side or the other?
Sidewalk would be great. I know it's proposed for the new development, but it's only for the Elks Club property.
Just in front of, yeah.
But the parking extends up in the neighborhood, and it would have to go all the way up.
Okay, yeah, that's more challenging because we have to get people to donate their own property to create a sidewalk.
I think it's already zoned that way. I think there's, we're, there's like four-foot setback for sidewalk at some point, so I think people are already aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff, and just trying to go by memory here. We used to have a process where the neighborhood could get together, and they can fill out a petition and vote to have special parking circumstances in their area. Did we suspend that process a couple of years ago, or is that still a possibility for this neighborhood?
Mayor, we did suspend that process. We're doing the comprehensive parking study that is also looking at neighborhood parking issues. So, we're hopeful that through the parking study, we might have some solutions. But to the speaker's point, I will talk with our Public Works Director when he returns, and we'll look at what some of those options might be for this neighborhood.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you. Both to the speaker and to staff, this is not the first time we've heard about this from the speaker, and I was under the impression that this was a council matter. Has staff responded to the issues he has raised in the past via email?
Mrs. Sayoc, yes. And then, then there was a public safety inspector came out and just looked one day. I wasn't complaining about the parking illegally. I'm worried about the parking on both sides. So, the road's only 42 feet wide, which does match the state standards. But when you park two cars, it barely leaves room for, for two cars to pass. If there's any people around, it's not possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Potter, Rick Potter?
Good evening. I'm Rick Potter, 144 Newell Avenue. I just, I'm not going to restate what Mr. Miller already stated. I just want to let you know, I live in the neighborhood as well, and I want to reinforce that, that he's not the only person in the neighborhood that has a concern about this. My wife and I walk every day, and we come back up that street about the time several people are leaving, I assume from courtside, and the sun is right in their eyes as they're driving down the street, and half the time, they don't even see us walking there. We know they're coming, so we kind of shy out of the way. But I just want, it sounds like you're in the process of getting started on this deal, and I just want to let you know that it is a problem, and, and hopefully, you can do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Khalil Fatahahi?
Yes, hi. I'm, I'm, I live in Newell Court, off of Newell Avenue, and I just wanted to second what Mr. Miller and Mr. Potter said. And it, it's been very difficult because the, this problem is just getting bigger and bigger. And if I, I didn't take photos, but if I had done, you know, they are now parking in the, people who want to play tennis, far away at the courtside, they are parking in the end of the court. And we have a problem even walking a dog there, you know, because you have to then go in the main traffic. We have no other, either, please find a solution for this, and let us have a walkway there and block that section, because I don't think the street is wide enough to have, you know, a walkway there and still have cars parked on both sides. Still, it won't, it doesn't look safe. So, please do something about it. And this is getting worse. The whole neighborhood is behind it. In the past, we wanted something, the whole neighborhood, we were really behind it. When we wanted the Elks have some homes there, and that place, that has become really a bad place, and we have bad visitors there. And anyhow, the, the city, for whatever reason, they did not make that possible. So, after four years, the, those, the developers stopped that. But at least about this one, please help us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Privede, I believe that the former Elks Lodge, the application is still valid for some amount of time, but there's no, there's been no movement on there?
That is correct.
Okay. Could staff reach out to the, the speakers this evening and meet with them and possibly reach out to courtside and, and help them with this issue?
We'll follow up.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Mayor?
Sorry, I was going to hold this for later, but I'll just ask, is courtside under a conditional use permit? Do we have any control over them whatsoever?
I, I believe they do have some form of planning approval. I don't know what it is exactly, but typically, we would size the parking to the different activities of the use, and it may be that we have to relook at, at their permit and the parking that they have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That was the last card I had for verbal communications, so we'll close verbal, and we'll move on with our first public hearing this evening, which is a plan development, plan development application, PD 17-002, and a negative declaration for the property at 16212 Los Gatos Boulevard, delivering our staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. Before you tonight is a proposal for a plan development rezone and negative declaration in order to allow for construction of a new two-story commercial building with a reduced front yard setback. The applicant originally submitted a residential project for the site in 2011. An additional background information is summarized in the staff report. The current proposal includes a two-story commercial building with retail space on the first floor and office space on the second floor, while also maintaining the existing one-story commercial building. On June 12th, Planning Commission recommended denial of the plan develop application based on concerns related to setbacks, hillside views, and traffic. Based on the summary provided in the report, staff recommends that the council accept the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the plan development application. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to try to go slow, and I'm going to ask this at the outset, because I want to understand, going forward with our hearing, an important issue that came up at the Planning Commission and that may come up tonight. That is the question of whether or not any kind of improvement to Los Gatos Boulevard is mandatory per our Safe Routes to School program. At the Planning Commission, Mr. Safti, you or someone referred back to our meeting, the town council meeting of October 18th, 2016. So, I went to look at that, and with the new changes to our website, I couldn't look at the video, but I could look at the agenda, and I could look at the, the minutes from that meeting. And at the agenda, the, the consideration of anything that had anything to do with Los Gatos Boulevard and Shannon was part of a report on traffic and parking around schools. And the recommendation was, quote, "Receive the report on traffic and parking around schools," unquote. So, on that agenda item, we received a Phase 1 study of, that was Safe Routes to School, Phase 1. And as part of that report, there were recommendations made by consultant, some of them that were accompanied by engineering drawings, of suggested things that could be done for infrastructure around schools. They were keyed to Van Meed or Dave's, Blossom Hill, whatever it was. This particular item was associated with Fisher. There were density maps, where did students come from, what could we do? And then, there was an engineering drawing of Los Gatos Boulevard and Shannon Road improvement that was suggested in connection with Fisher School. And it looked much like what's in the application and much like what was discussed. And all of these engineering drawings had prices attached to them. This one was priced at $750,000. So, then I went to look at, I couldn't watch the, the meeting, so I don't know what questions were asked during the course of the meeting, but I do know what the motion was. And the motion was made by me, and it was seconded by Councilwoman Spector, and it was, "To receive the report, thank everyone who has been a part of it, do items that cost nothing right away, look at items costing $2,500 to $10,000 that may not be able to get done right away, to categorize projects by the greatest impact for the money spent, use our commissions and safe routes to school to help set priorities where these things should be taking place, and identify, identify funding sources early and often, return to council as soon as possible, and start implementing the ideas." So, that was a long, if you will, phrase, and it was passed by the council unanimously to say, yes, I mean, we, the council are accepting this report. There's nothing in the motion, nothing in the agenda item, nothing since, that made any of those items an ordinance or mandatory. So, am I missing something that is making this requirement mandatory for this project? Because as I read it, in my mind, it is absolutely not mandatory. It's part of discretionary items that could be implemented by the town over time. Am I correct or incorrect about that?
Good evening, Mike Weiss, Associate Engineer. Yes, I was the one who made the reference during the Planning Commission meeting, and in coordination with staff after the fact, it's also included in the staff report that the Safe Routes to Schools, also known as the Traffic Study Around Schools, was incorporated as part of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, which was then subsequently adopted by council on March 7th, 2017. So, that would be another step beyond that for which it was actually adopted by?
Adopted as part of a plan, which has options in it, which the council may or may not implement over time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, it is not mandatory, correct? Mr. Scholz, it is not, it is not a mandatory part of this application to include. It is a matter for the town to determine whether it wants to require it as a condition of approval or not, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, the, as we go forward, in reading the Planning Commission, much of the discussion was around, we have cited this property in this way, we have done X, Y, and Z because we are required to implement this thing under your Safe Routes to School. My, and I'm trying to verify that my reading of this is correct, that they are not required. Now, I could see that the staff could say, hey, would you mind putting this in there? And staff go, mm. But they are not required to do so. So, if this council determined that its priority was not for that, but it was for something different, it could make that decision, correct?
The council could.
Yes, okay. That's right. Yeah.
And if I, if I could just add that the value of having a pedestrian, a bicycle pedestrian master plan is that it is a roadmap for not only our own capital projects, but for when we do have private development. If there is a reasonable nexus, it gives us the ability to try and implement our plans. So, while council, of course, has the ultimate authority, we do use these plans when we're trying to determine what would be reasonable conditions for private development as well.
So, thank you. I understand that. And the only thing I'm trying to make sure that we understand as council going forward to consider this is that if the council were determined whether, you know, it wanted the improvement, not, whatever, it could make, we have the ability to make judgments with respect to this site design and plan, regardless of what our goals are in the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sort of smiling here because I was listening to Ms. Jensen's questions, and they followed a lot, in fact, all, of what I have been discussing with Mr. Paulson the last three days. So, let me back up a little bit. I was looking at Condition of Approval Number 87, and it references the Los Gatos Safe Routes to School Plan, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, and General Plan Complete Street Elements. My question, and then, having read the Planning Commission's minutes, it was clear to me, at least, that what was confusing to them was what is mandated by the council and what is not mandated by the council? Where do we, Planning Commission, have discretion? So, with that background, in my discussions with Mr. Paulson, I was led to understand that the conditions of approval for this application, as they emanate from Condition Number 87, were mandatory with one exception where the condition was a reasonable extension of the, of these various plans and so forth. So, I guess I'm going to go back to staff, Mr. Paulson, or whomever. Of these conditions that, well, any condition, but I'll focus on 87. Of the conditions on Section 87, Condition Number 87, that references all of these plans, which of these are mandatory and which of these are not mandatory, but are, are suggestions or by staff that are reasonable under these various plans? And I should say, based upon the answers to what Ms. Jensen asked, it seems to me that nothing is mandatory.
So, for Performance Standard 87, items A, B, D, E, and F were part of the Safe Routes to School report. Item C was from the Bike and Ped Master Plan. I will turn towards the town attorney in terms of mandatory requirements.
None of them are mandatory. The council always has the ability of any of these plans to determine that it's not in its best use based on the, based on the evidence, based on the, the project. So, even if something is in your master plan, even if something's in your general plan, you always have the ability to determine differently than what your guiding documents are. But from a staff standpoint, when it's looking at this project, we look at it as mandatory as, as the town manager said, we're trying to look for places where we can find funding in all the projects, as your motion said, determine where you can find funding for the master Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan or for the Safe Route. So, they're all guiding documents, but it's when you say, are they mandatory? There are many a times when you look in a specific plan or general plan, where you might not follow those specific terms because of the, the project, so. So, the guiding documents.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none at this time, we will open up the public portion of the program. We'll call the applicant forward for your presentation.
Eugene Sakai with Studio Escort Architecture, on behalf of the applicant, STEM Development. It's been a long time getting here. We were last year on the same site back in 2014. Next image, please. As was referenced in the staff report, presenting an all single-family residential application with 11 residences. Next slide. As some of you may recall, that application was unanimously denied with a lot of community opposition to boot. Some of the direction that council provided so graciously to us upon giving us that denial were things that we took very much to heart in producing our subsequent application for an all commercial project. I'll just go over these quickly. Number one was absolutely no single-family residential on this site. Number two, strong preference for commercial uses. Number three, no medical or medical office uses. Number four, propose a project that is general plan and zoning compliant. And number five, comply with the town commercial design guidelines and the Los Gatos Boulevard plan. So as I said, all of that is, is direction that we took very much to heart. We then came, after several rounds of design study internally, to a meeting hosted here by planning staff at Town Hall that was well-attended by, I'd say, somewhere between 30 and 40 members of the community, at which we presented several options for, for a commercial design at their direction of council. One of these, as per this slide, was a study for a full underground parking garage with some surface parking, next, and two levels of retail above. This is what we considered our maximum code compliance scheme, meeting all setbacks, lot coverage requirements, and parking. We also presented a less aggressive retail scheme of approximately 11,000 square feet, no underground parking, all surface. And finally, a mixed-use development with seven units above some retail. All of these were done in consultation with planning as to what would be a code-compliant project in terms of use, setbacks, coverage, et cetera. At this hearing, it was fairly clear to us, after hearing the testimony of the community members, that the, the strong preference was for the middle path with no residential, that being an all-commercial project with all surface parking. So something significantly less than a fully maxed-out, yet code-compliant project. Armed with that information, we came back with our full application some months later, which bears a strong resemblance to what you see before you tonight. It is an all-commercial scheme. It does propose to retain the existing former auto dealership building at the back part of the site, and pushes the building towards the street as to minimize impacts on the adjacent single-family neighbors. We made strong efforts to present a fully zoning, general plan, and design guidelines compliance scheme, as was directed to us. Some images of that follow. Upon submitting that scheme, we were told in no uncertain terms by staff that, unlike our prior application, the all-residential application, that we had to now comply with the previously discussed Safe Roots to School program. This came as a bit of a surprise to us, but it was something that we pivoted quickly on and integrated quickly into our design. Wanted to point out that between the initial application that we submitted prior to the Safe Roots to School coming into play, we had a curb-to-building setback of 24 foot two. Upon implementing the Safe Roots to School design for the, for the right-of-way, we ended up with a slightly larger setback from the building to face of curb of 24 foot eight for a net gain of six inches. To speak to the Safe Roots to School in more detail, I'm going to hand the deus over to Scott Shork of BKF Engineers.
This slide in the red represents the loss of the lane. So the actual curb face pushes out about 10 feet. And the pork chop islands also, at the intersection, are eliminated. This is a little hard to read, but essentially, this is the 2017 project, which was the, the fully conforming project. And what it shows is setbacks from building, proposed building is, into all the existing buildings. This one's not supercritical. It's just, the only thing that changed here is you can barely see, there's the, along the Los Gatos Boulevard in the orange, there's a, what was a eight-foot attached sidewalk. And then on Shannon Road, it was a 10-foot attached with tree wells. And the 2019 project, with the Safe Routes to School, created a green landscape buffer that is now four feet of landscaping, eight feet of sidewalk, I believe, or 10 feet of sidewalk, along Los Gatos Boulevard. So it, you know, pushes the pedestrians further away. And then along Shannon Road, that one was conforming to the bike plan, which required us to do the landscaping and the 10-foot walk. Those were all implemented after we had come with a fully compliant project in 2017. And then the, on this exhibit, we show setbacks. So if you start on the left side, you've got 33 feet to Compass Real Estate. We're at 24 foot eight. Edward Jones is at 23. The resident at Magnuson Loop is at 18 and some change. KFC Taco Bell's 24 and some change. And then on the other side, you've got Yoga Source at 27 and a half. You've got the Robson Homes at, it's hard for me to read that, I think it's 26 and a half. So that shows the consistency with the neighborhood with regards to setbacks. But essentially, when that curb face moved out one lane, the building just slid with it. The curb moved 10 feet, and the building moved nine and a half. This is the, you're probably all familiar with, they're doing a bunch of restriping on Blossom Hill, for example, where they're implementing the green lanes, or the green striping for bikes. And so this implements a lot of that Safe Routes to School elements, and it makes it a much safer intersection. And the traffic consultant will speak to that. This is a larger slide that repeats all the information on the exhibit. And essentially, it's a quick way to look at all these setbacks and see that our project's actually in general conformance with these. In fact, it's further back than most of the buildings along our side. And then, the other thing to note on the bottom of this slide is that the second floor of our building is 3510 back, which is considerably further than some of these other ones. I think Compass is at 33. But a lot of these are vertically two stories at these setback dimensions. And then Gary Black, Hexagon, is going to speak to some traffic issues or items.
Thank you. We did the traffic study for the project, but I'm here to talk about the Safe Roots to School Plan. There were a lot of questions at the Planning Commission about the Safe Roots to School Plan, and so we thought we'd just spend a minute going over it. This is a graphic from the Safe Roots to School Plan that shows what the proposal was. And as you earlier heard, the staff asked this applicant to incorporate the Safe Roots to School Plan into their frontage improvements, which they agreed to do. And we believe as transportation professionals that this is actually a very good plan. We think it improves pedestrian and bicycle safety without compromising any operations for motor vehicles or capacity for motor vehicles or anything. So I'm going to point to a couple of salient features. Right here now is a crosswalk that's uncontrolled. So the students cross that crosswalk without any signal or anything. They get to this island, which is very small, and there's not enough room on that island for the number of students that, that need to cross here at school times. Yeah? Oh, we got to go? Okay. If you have any questions, I'll come back up.
Thanks, Gary. Since we're out of time, I wanted to really just kind of touch on a few salient points with my remaining 26 seconds, second to last slide in your packets. You know, first of all, as I mentioned earlier, we're far from fully maximizing out the developable area of the site. 22.8% lot coverage, where 50% is allowed, not maxing out the height, citing the building to minimize impacts to neighbors, consistent face of curb with context, and fully compliant with the Boulevard Plan, Commercial Design Guidelines, Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan. And furthermore, going into the commission hearing, staff, town staff was recommending for project approval. So-
Let's see if we have questions for your team.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you. I would like to go back, because I was really paying attention. And the gentleman who was speaking to, you were on this slide, I don't know what this slide is called, 16212, Los Gatos Boulevard. If you could go back to that and just finish your explanation. And what I'm looking for is, because I saw or read, I think, a significant amount of confusion on the Planning Commission's part, I want to make sure that I and the council understands this better. So if you could just go and finish up whatever it is you need to do to explain the changes on the Boulevard.
Thank you. By the name, my name's Gary Black. I don't know if I mentioned my name. So I was explaining here the challenges that we have now with this crossing for the students. And so the Safe Roots to School Plan was devised to make this a safer crossing. And at the same time, as you can see on this diagram, there are two lanes that, that go northbound on Los Gatos Boulevard at this signal. As soon as you get to the other side, which is kind of ghosted underneath here, there's three lanes. So it goes from two lanes going through the signal immediately to three lanes. However, this section, well, this is, here's the project frontage right here, but this section of road is really not necessary for anything. It's excessive width on Los Gatos Boulevard that, that's not necessary for serving motor vehicle traffic. Therefore, this Safe Routes to School Plan takes advantage of that, moves the curb out, and creates a wider sidewalk. Right now, the sidewalk is eight feet. Under this plan, the sidewalk would be 10 feet plus four feet of landscaping. So you go from eight feet to 14 feet, which is substantial improvement for the comfort level and safety of the pedestrians, without affecting the motor vehicle circulation or traffic at all. So that's really the beauty of this plan, and I think why it's included in the Safe Roots to School. As soon as you get past the edge, well, this actually shows the entire section going all the way up to Magnuson Loop. Now, for this project, they would just build the part along their frontage, which is right in here. And then from that point on, the third lane would still continue.
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you. I can follow up then. What I hear you saying, but you're going to have to tell me if I hear wrong, what I hear you saying is that the, for your group there, the Safe Routes to School conditions that are being imposed upon your application, you think are good things?
As a traffic professional, I think they're good things. The developer would have to answer about whether it's good for the development, but from a transportation standpoint, it's a good thing.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions further for the team? Vice Mayor.
I'm not sure who these questions are going to go to. I don't think it's the traffic person, maybe Mr. Sakai. So my first question, well, I have a couple of preliminary questions, and then I got a question for you. In looking at the Planning Commission transcript, there's a lot of discussion about the site plan for the property, and how it was affected or not by your choice whether to include Safe Roots to School improvements. And my, correct if I'm wrong, I had two takeaways from that. One, the amount of property that you have to work with, regardless of whether you put this improvement in, is the same, correct?
Correct.
Okay. The second question is, I got the impression from the transcript that the choice for the site design and the request for the reduced setback, because it is a reduced setback, and that's why you're asking for the PD, right?
Correct.
Is to maximize available square footage, given the expense of the Safe Roots to School improvement. Is that correct?
I would say that's a reasonable characterization.
Okay. Now, let's assume for a moment, just hypothetically, that you have all the money in the world, you could do whatever you want. Why are you keeping the old existing building? Which, if I look at some of your slides, particularly some aerial, I don't know which one it is. There's an aerial view that's got the existing building in there. Oh, it's new commercial building plus remodel of existing. And I couldn't tell you what, there it is. No, not that one. It's, yeah, that's it. That little, that little, that oversized Craftsman in the back, I don't figure out, I can't figure out how and why you would keep it there, because you have so many other options to configure this property if you just got rid of it. So why are you keeping it, and how does it constrain your site design?
It's a great question. If I could refer you back to, and these are just one of the studies that we did, we brought this one to the Town Hall informal community meeting back in 2016. That's really terrible to read. I think you can see it better on your, on your packet, so hopefully you can find that. But, you know, we did look at options where we did not retain that existing structure. Architecturally, it, you know, it's not a significant building. It doesn't have any historic merit. I wouldn't say it's a particularly good example of craftsman-style architecture. But as we, as we sort of looked at different options and, and thought about the potential impact of our building, we realized that the building was actually fairly decently sited, and something that the adjacent neighbors were used to. You know, that building's been there for, I don't know, 20, 30 years, predating many of the residents that might have moved in after its construction. And so we felt in some ways that the structure being there was, in some ways, a good shield for the noise, the fumes of parked, and parking cars. You know, so we chose to actually leverage the value of the structure that's there, kind of use it as a bit of a screening element for the new building relative to the neighbors. And quite frankly, our client is very committed to reuse of older buildings wherever possible from a green standpoint. Together, we actually redeveloped an old auto shop on Deans Boulevard, right near the Apple Campus, for the very same reasons, environmentally friendly approach. You know, there's a structure there, it's sound, it deserves reuse as opposed to going into a landfill.
I appreciate your answer. Thank you. So why not incorporate it into your design, because the two have nothing to do with each other right now?
We feel it is incorporated, but, you know, we, we felt it was also important to have an ingress egress point on both Shannon Road and Los Gatos Boulevard, just for site circulation. And so, short of a two-story connection where the, the first level was left as a car tunnel, you know, for cars to pass under to go to Los Gatos Boulevard, we, we didn't really see a good way to, you know, to kind of incorporate that building into, we felt the two-building approach was better, in other words, from a site planning standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? Seeing none, we will call the public forward. First card I have is Kim Deng, followed by Jeffrey Barnett, followed by Thomas Cook. Mr. Barnett, you could come forward. I don't believe- I don't believe, oh, you know what? That was on, that was on Newell Street, but they put verbal number 11. My mistake, I'm sorry. Mr. Barnett.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Jeffrey Barnett. My residence is 101 Wallen Way. I've been a resident of the town for 40 years. I speak tonight as a resident of the town and not as a member of any commission or committee that I may have been on or presently served on, but I do represent the interests of 10 of my neighbors. They were identified in the transcript of the planning commission hearing on January 12th. You have my opposition, two opposition papers, an original and supplemental. Original was June 9th, the supplemental was August 1st, and you also have a transcript of my remarks at the planning commission hearing. So I see no reason to repeat those at this time, except that the issue that clearly needs to be focused on is the setback because it's a two-thirds degradation of the required setback, which is from the property line and not from the curb. I verified that with staff. I think it's a significant degradation of the, of the project as a whole. The report by BKF that I think was recently referred to measures the difference of the various structures on Los Gatos Boulevard from, also from the curb rather than from the property line. So we don't have any information now as to the relationship of the building frontages to the property line itself, and there's no way to compare that. But it certainly would be substantially less than the curb length itself. I think that approach masked the critical appearance of the proposed building from the sidewalk, which is that the two-story building would loom over the sidewalk itself and create an adverse appearance that's not harmonious with any other building on the Secondly, I want to emphasize that the application presents a combination of problems which require that the application be denied. And these problems include the, not only the degradation of the setback, but the construction of a two-story building on a corner which is, has a signalized intersection, the lack of landscaping on the setback itself, view impairment, and adverse effects on the traffic, and I believe that other speakers may address that. So with that, I appreciate your consideration of my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Next speaker, Thomas, oh, we have a question. Councilmember Rennie.
Yeah, I was curious. You said a two-story building's going to loom over it, but they say the second story, I think, was set back to 35 something from, from the curb, so it's not a two-story straight-up building like some of the others. It's set back. Doesn't, doesn't, that you feel that still doesn't make a difference in keeping it from looming over?
Well, from my perspective, that would be some aesthetic improvement for, from the Los Gatos Boulevard side, but I still believe from the Shannon side that you would see both elevations.
Okay, thank you.
Thomas Cook. After Thomas, Marlon Smith.
Good evening. Excuse me. Good evening. I'm Thomas Cook, representing Los Gatos, Monas Reno Safe Routes to School. We obviously have no position one way or the other on the actual development. We do however support the recommended improvements for bicycle and safety, pedestrian, and in particular, the safety for students. This intersection was flagged by us years and years ago as one of the more problematic ones in the town. There was a fairly long list. The traffic engineer that was hired by the town to look at safety improvements for students walking and biking to school flagged this intersection and made the suggested recommendations that I guess we're all looking at. A lot of, those recommendations were incorporated into the, I guess it was called the school, school traffic study, which was then rolled into the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, which was then adopted by the Town Council. My understanding how these things work, the town attorney has said these are guidelines, and there's been some comment made about the cost of these things. My understanding is the way these, these things work is you get, get plans into the mix early on, and if you have some money and can make them happen, you make them happen. And obviously, the things that we were able to do initially, or the town was able to do initially, were the lower-cost items. So it, this is an opportunity to make these changes. If there is some consideration not to make those changes, I think by definition, you're rejecting ever making those changes because it's probably not going to be development at this intersection again in the near term. So we support the changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Questions? The speaker seeing none. Thank you. Marlon Smith. After Marlon is Dan Snyder.
Good evening. Do I need to say my name again?
No, unless you want to.
By the way, I, seeing how nicely all you gentlemen are dressed tonight, I apologize for taking off my tie before coming here. I'm supposed to laugh about that. My two brothers and I grew up on the corner of Shannon, the Los Gatos Boulevard, right across Shannon from this project. And as we have expressed ourselves in previous proposals, if I am seeing and understanding the, the story poles when they were up there, the first thing I would like to see changed is that the building be pulled back so that when you look up and down Boulevard, you don't see this one building pushed way out in front. That's one. Second is that I have a real hard time understanding why it would be a good idea for traffic to get rid of that right turn lane as Shannon approaches Los Gatos Boulevard. That is a very convenient, and I think, traffic-helping access onto Los Gatos Boulevard. And also, in connected to that, losing that one lane, even though it's only a couple of blocks long, is, again, I think, a setback in terms of traffic and convenience. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have questions? Seeing none, thank you. Dan Snyder.
I'm not Dan Snyder, but apparently I'm going to play him on TV. He burned his hand cooking dinner and sent me his note and asked if I could read it, so I hope that's acceptable. This is from Dan Snyder, "Parent of schoolchildren at Fisher and Los Gatos High School, former Transportation and Parking Commission member, and Safe Routes to School volunteer." So this is his statement. "The benefits of this project to accomplish significant safety improvements from the town's own Safe Routes to School study on Los Gatos Boulevard is very valuable. The planned development complies with nearly every objective and code for this area. The denial and objections are basically summed up as, 'I just don't like change even if it benefits the town as a whole.' Losing some trivial theoretical view of a hillside through trees from a busy commercial district is not a good excuse to deny advancing the town's broad interests and economic vitality." Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Joseph Prang. This is the last card I have on this item, so if anybody else wants to speak, please bring a card forward.
Good evening, everyone. I think I've spoken to you folks before, so nice to see you again. So we're the, let's see there at the site, so we are Artisan Wine Depot, and I would like to tell you that in previous times when I've spoken to you and you approved us coming in the first place, we just had our fifth year anniversary. So I guess it worked out. So thanks very much for all that. I just want to say our support for the proposal that Scott and company are making. As you know, it's made multiple proposals in the past. From our perspective, this allows the business to continue to expand and be present at the location. I think we built an incredibly strong customer base. We have almost 10,000 customers who have come through there over the years, which is pretty amazing. And we feel like the property will be nicely developed by the proposal here finally, and we think that the proposal of how to handle the work at the intersection is quite good. So, you know, if we're the resident folks there, then we completely support the proposal, and we support the activities we've been doing for five years, like, for example, trying to ease the traffic situation, as I hope you all know now, that in terms of the school, parents parking there twice a day and all that sort of thing during school season and so on. So it continues. I think, I think we together have done a nice job of trying to support the community, and I wholly support it going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Prang. Questions? Seeing none. Maria Risto.
Hi, Maria Risto, 85 Broadway. I'm very much in favor of this project. I've, I've actually, in full disclosure, known this developer for a long time, when he owned the Learning Game downtown with his wife, and then they had their daughter and their local residents. She's gone through the schools, and he's been very involved with the community. He's been involved with revamping this project multiple times. I've attended the meetings he's held where the neighbors came, and no, they don't want housing, yes, they want this, no, they want that, and he's worked with the neighbors, I think, very well. Now, in this last iteration, when there's an opportunity to not only create something better on this site, but also bring in ridiculously expensive infrastructure that we really want and need for Safe Routes to School, to fix an intersection that's possibly the most difficult intersection we've had, I think is really critical. I'm not saying that's why you adopt the project, but I think there's enough other things about the project, and then when we get these improvements, it's significant. I don't understand, I, I do understand, there are people who don't understand why the right lane being eliminated is not going to be a traffic issue, but I'm assuming that you've read the engineering reports and looked at it. Its setup is a free right turn, but it's not a free right turn. There's no turn on red. Unfortunately, because of the pork chop island and because of the way it looks, people still do turn right on red. Not often, but they do. And there's a false sense of security for children crossing there, there's a false sense of security for bikes going by, that cars can't turn, but they do. The lane that's being eliminated is a right-turn-only lane, and so as cars go in there, if that, they're not going to turn right on Blossom Hill Road, they have to merge over anyway. You're going from a two-lane road to a two-lane road just a little bit longer. The other thing is the crosswalk for the students is being moved from this very problematic intersection over to an area where it's a shorter distance, and it connects up right to the corner at Roberts Road. So everything about this was thought through by professionals and are the kind of things that, the improvements that we see in other cities, and the things that we want to see in our town, and the things that we're planning for. And so I think it's important to focus on the project itself, but I think the resistance to these changes is not something we should be considering because we've already approved them, and we know that this works. We have literally hundreds of kids that walk to Fisher and bike to Fisher and walk and bike to Van Meter. We need to support those children, and we need to encourage other people to continue that so we can alleviate traffic congestion. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last card I have on this item. Mr. Fagor, please come forward. If anybody else wishes to speak, please bring your card forward now.
Thank you. Appreciate the last minute getting the opportunity to speak. To save time, I'll just say, I agree with Maria. The points that she made regarding that intersection, the safe routes to school for the kids, the work that the developer's done over the last several years to try and accommodate the community has been extraordinary. Again, that doesn't qualify that this project should be approved, but rather, the, the, the design of the project, everything about it, fits Los Gatos, fits the sense of community, fits the sense of we want to take care of safe rides for, for kids and have a safe intersection there, as well as a development that is going to be good. The only concern I have is the, the five-foot setback from the sidewalk, not from the property line, but from the sidewalk. I would prefer that, however, given the, the entire project and having sat on a few of the planning commission meetings where this was being reviewed, I think it's, it's something that's going to add to the character of the town, preserve the look and feel of the town, and at the same time, provide a safe passage for pedestrians, bicyclists, and automobiles in that area, where there is problem, a big, major problem now. I've seen too many skid marks along that area. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. At this point in time, we will invite the applicant back up. You have five minutes to add anything that you may not have had time to speak about the first time, or comment on any of the items the speaker spoke to.
You know, I think we are about one parcel in this great town, and, you know, obviously we have a self-interest in seeing our project approved. You know, however, also, you know, our, our client is, is a resident here, a longtime resident at that, and as was mentioned earlier, you know, has children of school age, can well sympathize with the, you know, the safety considerations that, that kids walking to the nearby schools face. So philosophically, there's no doubt that the requirement, as, as we see it, of the Safe Routes to School is an overall benefit to the community at large. Philosophically, it's something that we're all in alignment with. From a project-based standpoint, from our own little parcel point of view, it becomes more difficult. You know, the, the estimate of $750,000 of public works improvements back in 2016, I would, I would hazard to guess if we bid the, the project out now, it's going to come in well in excess of a million dollars, if not more. And for a relatively small project like this, one that is not maximizing its full development potential by a long stretch, that, that seven-figure number is, is a big burden to bear. And so, you know, we carefully thought about the, the urban context, we carefully thought about whether bringing the building 10 feet closer to the Boulevard was going to be a big detriment to the community, whether it would be out of context with its neighbors. We worked very closely with staff on this, on this very issue, both, both the planning staff here and the town's consulting architect. We studied the impact on the hillside views ad nauseam with both staff and the town's consulting architect, revised the building a dozen times or more in comments to staff and consulting architects' suggestions, all of which I thought were really well-taken, to be honest. There's no doubt that here before you is a better building than what we presented in 2017. It's a better project than what we presented in 2017 because of the fact that it integrates the Safe Routes to School program and requirements while still trying to balance the, the very real economic needs of our client. Hence, you know, bringing the building 10 feet further forward, it does provide us more developable area, for sure, and that's one of the, the ways that we feel, you know, can, can partially offset this added cost. And, you know, all of the design iterations and, and changes that we've made, we feel still keep the building, even at 10 feet closer to the centerline of street, in line with its context. You know, so all in all, I guess I would, you know, as, as you adopted back in 2016, I guess I would ask you to take a broader view of the project. I think we, as a small development team, have somewhat of a difficult time doing that and rely on, on the greater wisdom here in this room to help us see the, see the light, so to speak, but I think we have, and I feel that our project is, is a very good one on balance for both the town and our client and his, and his future tenants, as well as the future visitors of this, of this shopping center. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Sekai. Councilmember Rennie. Councilmember Rennie.
Maybe just one question. So there was concern about the two-story vertical image, and I guess we decided that there is a setback on, on Los Gatos Boulevard, almost 10 feet, I think, from the first floor to the second floor. And then the question was, and I can see on the Shannon roadside, it looks like there is a setback, but I can't figure out how big it is, quickly looking through all these drawings.
If you'll indulge me a moment, I have a slide that I feel illustrates that fairly well.
So it looks, it looks setback. I'm wondering what that, how much that is.
What that distance is.
About the same as the front?
I would say it's, it's a little less. I, off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you, but there is a, I'd say it's about six feet as opposed to the 11 feet that we have along Los Gatos Boulevard, so maybe about half.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a, probably for you, a simplistic question, and it should be one simplistic one for me, too, but I just want to make sure that I have exactly what you're saying. If you do not get your, your plan development, if you do not get the exception to the setbacks that you're requesting, I'm going to assume you're going to be losing square footage in your building, correct?
Correct. Mr. Shork might know a little better than me, but I believe by moving the building 10 feet closer to the centerline, we picked up three parking spaces, which enabled us to add approximately 700 square feet of floor area.
All right, so you would, you would lose 700 square feet because you're losing parking spaces?
Three parking spaces, yeah. So to keep the parking floor area in balance, if we lost those three parking spaces, we would then in turn, to remain code compliant, have to reduce the building area by 700 square feet.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Seok.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, some small, some large. First thing, there's been various comments about the third lane that will be removed. And I just want to clarify, that third lane, that free right turn, it's one block that will be removed? Or is it several blocks? And if you have a diagram to show exactly where the third lane will resume on Los Gatos Boulevard, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so it goes from Shannon at the intersection there down to Magnuson Loop.
No, it doesn't.
Ultimately.
Only the frontage.
Yeah, ultimately, you're right. So it, it only does it on the frontage, and then it's striped right back to Magnuson Loop, but...
And if you could somehow blow that up, Paul? So if you can, as, give me an, like, that's simplistically, that's one block, I could say, but how many feet are we talking about?
I don't know. I'm not sure what the frontage is. Maybe it's 300 feet.
Okay. And so as a traffic engineer, does 300 feet impact, detriment, the traffic that people are concerned about?
I'll step in and answer that while they're shuffling the diagrams, but, no, it wouldn't make any difference to the traffic operations. Half of that is in the middle of the intersection. There's no cars at all that use that part of it. And I think there was a little bit of a miss, maybe miscommunication about this right turn lane. This project would not eliminate the right turn lane on Shannon. That right turn lane would still be there. It's just that one of the lanes on Los Gatos Boulevard would be gone for a short distance, as, as Scott said, maybe 300 feet. But then it would pick up again before you get to Magnuson Loop. So I'll point to the diagram. So the lane would, this project is proposing to move the curb along its frontage, which ends right here. And here's Magnuson Loop. So this part of the third lane would still be there, and then, of course, everything beyond that. If we look at the safe routes to school plan, it actually showed the curb pushed out on this part, too.
Okay.
But that wouldn't be done with this project.
Okay. And so if you could move the diagram so that we're looking at the actual stoplight again?
It's going to distract away.
So you said something that I want to just clarify. The right lane, right-hand turn will still remain. Right now, when I'm at that intersection, I have to wait because you can't turn right on red. But if I'm at that stoplight and I would like to make a right turn, if I'm on Shannon, would like to make a right turn on Los Gatos Boulevard, I still have that option, I just have to wait till it turns green?
Yes, which is the same as it is today.
Just the same it is now, okay.
Yeah, it's right here. That right turn lane would still be there.
Okay. Um, okay, so that, that's my first question.
Let me just jump back on one of your questions. So Scott just clarified that actually the plan right now is to continue the bike lane striping as shown there, so that even though the curb wouldn't be moved out, that sort of, sort of takes away that lane all the way to Magnuson Loop, effectively.
Another question I have, again, with, you know, not knowing how the council will move forward, but there've been several comments about how this is a heavily impacted intersection. What are your plans for construction, should this be approved, to ensure that the safety of those hundreds of kids remain a top priority while you're trying to do construction on that site?
I'm not sure that this would be that much more difficult than typical intersection construction, but, I mean, potentially, the improvements could be staged around, I don't want to say vacations because they're not long enough, but possibly during the summer because the offsite improvements can be done at any particular time during the, the project, which will, construction would extend for at least a year, so maybe there's a possibility to do that. But it's, the fact that that lane isn't really necessary, to be quite honest, it won't be that difficult. It's going to feel like we're just closing off the shoulder during construction. The cars will move through smoothly. There hasn't been a lot of thought as to, like, what's the temporary pedestrian movements and things like that, but it's, it's pretty standard construction practices.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with questions for now.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to follow up on Councilwoman Seok's questions, and that the larger the plan that you had up just a second ago, could you put that back up again?
Sure.
Okay. So just to make sure I understand first, whatever actual infrastructure improvements that you would be considering are only along your property line, correct?
Correct, other than the striping.
The striping, but there's no physical barrier there, there's no curb there?
No.
Okay. So my question either for you or the traffic engineer is, I would have a sidewalk that's extended out. I don't, I don't know the dimensions right there, but then, right when your property ends, the sidewalk goes boom, back, back, back right in again. Am I right about what I'm seeing there? So, I mean, it's already an offset sidewalk. If I walk on Shannon, it's, the sidewalk is pretty much offset when I cross the street to your property. So you'd extend it out, they'd be in a line, but then it'd go, it would curve right back in after your property ends.
The long-term plan.
Not the long-term plan, what you are proposing.
Understood, yeah. But what you just described is correct. It will jog right back in.
Right, okay.
This lane ultimately will come out and do that as part of the safe routes.
Right, but the, but that's a stripe on a traffic lane.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about real construction in the future, though.
I'm not talking about the future. I want to understand what we would get with this project.
Yeah.
That's what my questions are. So with this project, what we get is a bumped-out sidewalk that curves right back in after your property line, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, we also get a stripe that extends, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But not a sidewalk or whatever, so...
And nothing physical.
If I am an automobile, in theory, I can bump right back in regardless of whether that stripe is there, correct?
True. And you see these dashes implies the vehicle is allowed to cross that to get in here to make the right turn lane. It's essentially a right turn pocket at that point.
So if the, and this, I think, is for the traffic engineer, wherever he is, is that actually a, a safe way to construct an engineering project partially where I am interrupting the sidewalk and the traffic in the way that's configured there?
Well, the, I think that would be an acceptable striping. The striping it's shown is dashed, which means legally you're allowed to cross that bike lane and make a right turn. If you didn't have that extended striping there, the bike lane would pick up where it does now. There's a, right, right there is where the bike lane is, right against the curb. So, yeah, right there is where the bike lane is now. And so you would have a jog in the bike lane, and still cars that made a right turn on Magnuson Loop would, would cross over the bike lane. So it, in my mind, it doesn't really make much difference.
So I'm really not asking about, is it acceptable? I'm asking, I'm sort of, what I'm looking at is the sidewalk being bumped out and then bumping back in, so it's kind of awkward. It's not extended the way the safe routes to school engineering plan is because you're only constructing it partially. You've got a bump out, and then you're protecting that bump out or, you know, the, the reversion to the lane with striping. And so I'm just asking you, not as the, the traffic engineer on this project, but as a traffic engineer, is that a safe configuration?
Yes, I think it is. It's typical. We see it all over whenever we have instances where streets are partially built to, to their ultimate configuration, but not the entire length. So you end up with transitions like this. They're pretty common.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for the development team? Applicant seeing none. We'll close the public hearing, and we can do disclosures from council. Councilmember Seok.
Disclosures, I have met with the applicant since, in this last, last iteration, and I've walked the site and have read all the emails and letters that have been submitted.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, I have met with the applicant in this iteration and in prior iterations, and I have visited and revisited the site.
I as well have met with the applicant several times, including this latest rendition, and have also been by the site. Vice Mayor.
Met with the applicant on, for this particular project and am on the site almost daily.
Councilmember Rennie.
I have also met with the applicant for this iteration and read all the emails and visited the site.
All right, thank you. So, Councilmember Rennie.
So first question for staff. It's clear we have a plan to continue this and are, the rest of the way up to Magnuson Loop, do we have any plans to put in our budget? Are we going to pay for this, the rest of the sidewalk up to Magnuson Loop out of our own budgets, since we don't expect any projects next door? How long do we, in other words, how long do we think this is going to be in this configuration before we get to the, to the final configuration? And maybe part of that is, what do we think the cost is? Because clearly, you're going to bring a project to us, and we'll have to think about, you know, whether we're going to approve it or put it off for the future kind of thing. And maybe a third part of the question is, don't we have the similar kinds of configurations on Union Avenue where we're, we're trying to extend it, that, extend the two lanes, but we don't have all the properties yet?
I'll, I'll give it a shot. So in terms of the CIP, our capital improvement program, we have not yet discussed whether or not the sidewalk extension would be a CIP project. I think based on the conversation tonight, it's something that we could certainly consider for our 2021 CIP. And at that time, we would do the cost estimation for your consideration. We are very actively seeking grants for projects that would qualify, whether they're bicycle or pedestrian improvements, and it's possible that this remnant stretch might be competitive for grant funding. So we, we don't have that dollar figure now, so it would essentially, if this project were approved and if those improvements were put in place, we would see situations like we do see on Union Avenue and further, further up Los Gatos Boulevard where you have extended sidewalks and then you, you know, go back in and you have a narrower sidewalk. And that would be an interim condition. I don't believe we have any development proposals for that corner property at Magnuson Loop, so our ability to perhaps condition a future project there would be probably limited, which would then mean that the town would have the obligation for finishing that sidewalk.
Councilmember Seok.
Two questions. I want to follow up on the Councilmember Jensen's question about that little bump out, that remnant. So under the umbrella of safety, forget aesthetics, whether you have a green stripe lane that extends all the way to Magnuson Loop that's dashed so that people can make the right turn, or whether it also bumps out to conform with the sidewalk. In your opinion, what is the safest and clearest for a bicyclist and/or a driver until that remnant is improved?
Well, as I understand it, we have an existing sidewalk there now, so it is narrow, but if it's designed properly, the, you would, you would walk, if you were going from Magnuson Loop, you would walk on the narrow part of the sidewalk towards Shannon. It would widen out. Then you'd have, you know, the, the wider sidewalk to walk on. The bicycle lane, by moving it out, so that way it is a continuous bike lane instead of jet, jetting back and forth, that probably is the safest.
Okay.
And again, it is a curbed sidewalk, so even if cars do move across the dashed line to get near the curb, they wouldn't go onto the curb. And you, you would, a bicyclist knows that if you've got a dashed line, that it's possible that a car would cut in. So I think staff has worked to try and find a safe alternative, so that way, knowing that we're not going to be able to get the full improvement all the way to Magnuson Loop, how we could get the safest configuration under the circumstances.
Okay. Thank you. And then the second question I have, with this new, with the, with the safe routes to school addition, cost addition, they were, one of the remedies that staff had was to allow that extra square footage to come out. So, and the question I think that was asked was, if you were asked to push back, you would lose three spaces, parking spaces. Because it's a PD, is it possible, if the council decided we wanted to push it back, are we allowed to waive the three parking space requirement?
Thank you for the question, Joel Paulson, Community Development Director. Yes, that is a provision that you could employ into this PD, that they're not required to meet the parking requirement.
And so is that something small where staff can, can work with the applicant to figure out where those three parking spaces could be removed?
Absolutely. We would work with the applicant moving forward. Should a plan development be approved, we still have to go through an architecture and site application.
Okay, thank you.
No more comments. Councilmember Rennie.
Maybe, maybe you follow on to that. So if, if we move the building back, we're talking about keeping the same square footage, but reducing the, the parking requirement, does that mean it still has to be a PD? Because my understanding is this is a PD only so for the setback requirement.
So again, I would offer that you would be trading one necessity for a PD in the setback for a necessity for the PD for the reduction in parking.
And then my second question, which I had meant to ask before I forgot, it looks like in front of this property, that you potentially are setting up a class four bike lane. There seems to be a separation. Is that just a marked separation between the bike and the, and the travel lane? Or are you going to have some kind of barriers, cement barriers on the street?
That's intended... That's intended to be a buffered protected bike lane only, so it would be a Class I, I believe it is, or a class, I think it's Class II.
But we could add barriers in the future if we wanted to turn it, you know, some places, they just have plastic posts to kind of add that barrier, but we're not planning that at all.
That's not proposed with the application, but that could be something that could be evaluated in the future.
And then if, if we extend the, the complete plans, extending the sidewalk all the way down to Magnuson Loop, but this, would we also continue this protected bike lane all the way to Magnuson Loop then?
The protected bike lane is presented or proposed to be part of this application, so it stretches all the way to Magnuson Loop.
Not as part of this application, but as part of the Safe Routes to School plan?
Both. The, I believe it's Sheet C3 in the civil plans shows that the bike lane, the buffered protected bike lane, where it can stand all the way to Magnuson Loop, that complies with the Safe Routes to School. It just doesn't include the infrastructure improvements for the bump out of the curb, gutter and sidewalk.
Okay, I, I see that. It just looks different, but it still has a separation. Okay, thank you.
I have a question for staff. So getting back to the sidewalk that's in front of Magnuson Loop, what is it now? It's about four feet wide, and then we have a lane which is about 12 feet wide or, or whatever. If it were to be widened in the future, it would line up with this existing project sidewalk. The bike lane would still be continued, and then the turn onto Magnuson Loop would go around the new sidewalk. But my question is, you have an existing sidewalk, and then you would be adding, how many square feet of sidewalk? Would we have like a real big sidewalk there?
It would be approximately five feet for the entire length, so without knowing the front inch length there, it could be probably about 400 square feet approximately, the distance between the northern property line and Magnuson Loop, if you go about that four foot, four to five foot width, that stretch.
So you're talking about the square footage of the sidewalk?
Right.
But in other words, would we be eliminating a complete, you know, the remnants of a lane of traffic there, a complete lane which is ordinarily about 12 feet wide, right?
Correct.
So if the sidewalk's already five feet wide, and then we, what do you do with the existing sidewalk?
So is a part of the difference in the different widths proposed versus existing is you have the widened sidewalk, you also have a four-foot landscape strip, and then you also have a buffered bike lane. So that includes additional width compared to what's there now.
Thank you. Councilmember Sehak?
So I wanted to ask staff, I understand I'm putting you on the spot, with the plan development, we, the scenario I posed, you're getting, if you push it back, you get rid of three parking spaces. There's pros and cons to both. On the one hand, you push it back, you, you help alleviate the concerns people have about the mass on that corner, but then you lose three spaces. Do you have any immediate thoughts on, between the two options, if you were to, to provide an exception on one, what would be least bothersome?
I wouldn't hazard a guess as to which would be least bothersome, because that's not the type of decision-making we typically make. I think that is going to be something for the council to determine whether or not you think the loss of the three spaces is a better compromise than the reduced setback, the 10-foot reduction. So I would leave that to council. I don't know that staff would weigh in one way or the other, because I think
Okay.
Either way, the project, from staff's perspective, could work.
Okay.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you. Following up on that, remind me, we're talking about a potential loss of three parking spaces out of how many total now?
There are 58 onsite parking spaces proposed.
All right, thank you. And to staff also, we, staff has estimated the cost for this developer to install X feet of sidewalk. Wouldn't that be helpful to expediting for the council, the cost of the remaining sidewalk to Magnuson Loop?
So a large portion of that cost is attributed to the modification needed to the traffic signal, which would come with this, the proposed improvements. So it's kind of an inequitable balance. Without knowing exact numbers, the cost of sidewalk curb and gutter would be less than what's being proposed with this project.
Wouldn't you have the additional cost for the developer as components? And then you've given us the totality, but wouldn't you be able to use the work you've done here for this development to expedite your analysis of what the remainder of the sidewalk would be to Magnuson for the potential town construction?
That could be something that we could look into and present to you at a later date, yes.
And I can tell the town manager is saying yes.
Yes, we, there's numerous ways that the town staff could make that estimate. I apologize, we just don't have that figure for you tonight.
That's fine, thank you.
Councilmember Rennie?
Thank you. So we're kind of talking about moving the building around, so I wanted to understand this diagram a little better, which I know came from the applicant, which shows the different setbacks. And the, on here, it shows 24.2 for the proposed building, and the way it's drawn, it looks like it's actually further back than the Edward Jones, which is at 23. But if I'm understanding correctly, Edward Jones is measured to a sidewalk that's 10 feet further, well, it's, it's the small handout that only has a couple pages on it.
Attachment six.
Yeah, it says attachment six, the first page. So what, there was a concern about how the building lines up with the other buildings, if you're standing there, and, you know, this, how far out is this building in front of the others? And this diagram is, you know, it's up on top, thank you. It seems like it's misleading, because the shaded building looks like it lines up with Edward Jones, but if I do the math, I think it's actually nine feet in front of Edward Jones. Because Edward Jones is being measured to something that's 10 feet further to the east than the edge of the curb in front of this project. So I have to basically add 10 feet to Edward Jones, so it's really 33 feet from the final sidewalk in front of them compared to the 20, 24.2. So it's, I, I come up with it, this, the front of this building being nine feet in front of Edward Jones. Am I correct in trying to understand this? Looks like I've confused staff.
Thank you for the question, Joel Paulson, Community Development Director. So it's a little bit of, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. What the applicant was trying to illustrate was that from the existing curb to the Edward Jones, and from the proposed curb to their building, those dimensions along each of those. I think it is clear that if the improvements were done similar, in a similar manner to what is being proposed for this application, that setback would increase. I don't have the exact number, but it looks like it's at least probably five or feet or so, roughly.
So what I'm, what I'm trying to get to is one of the speaker's concerns about, if you stand on the corner, and this building is, is popped out from the rest of the buildings down the street, is that, is that true, and by how much is it popped out? And I was guessing nine feet on this, but you seem to be telling me maybe it's not nine, maybe it's six.
Yeah, I don't think it's nine feet, because you already have probably four or five feet in that existing sidewalk curb and gutter there. Just eyeballing it with a straight edge, it looks like they're fairly close. The Edward Jones is at a slight angle, so that corner is where you'd measure, that would be the closest point, and so they look relatively similar. But there would be an additional, like I said, probably four to five feet, I would guess, of improvements once the sidewalk was widened, but we do not have those exact figures, and we did not measure the applicant's information either.
So if, if your guess is right, you're saying it would be 28 feet from Edward Jones to the, to the new sidewalk versus 24.2, which still puts it about four feet out in front of Edward Jones?
It, it would be a little bit in front of Edward Jones, it appears.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion or emotion?
I have a question.
Vice Mayor?
Brand new question. Mr. Paulson, I was curious that you didn't do the, any measurement on the applicant's setback numbers, but, so if, if hypothetically, the council were inclined to, say, move the building back, if I look at this drawing that's up here now, the, the measurement is from a sidewalk that doesn't yet exist, so it's already bumped out. So what I'm trying to determine, let's imagine for a moment that the sidewalk isn't bumped out, and that we're measuring it from the same spot as all the other buildings on Los Gatos Boulevard that have an existing sidewalk. How far would the council need to move this building back to make it conform with those setbacks? So for example, we had a huge discussion over what's now the Compass Building, because it was originally, the Council Planning Commission thought it was too close to the street, they moved it back, they set back the second floor as is proposed here, but how far, you know, so what I heard the applicant say, well, okay, we move it back, we lose three spots and 700 square feet, great. But how far are they moving it back? I don't know how far even to, to start with any of that, of that discussion. How far would we need to move it back to achieve conformity?
So to move it back to conform with the required front setback of 15 feet, you need to move it back 10 feet?
From the new sidewalk? Or pretend we have an existing sidewalk? How far would I move it back?
So the sidewalk's irrelevant. We measure setbacks from the property line.
Okay, so how far would I move this back?
10 feet.
Thank you.
So I will make some comments. When I look at the diagram up there, I'm looking at, I think, what is called the Accra Site, which has just gone through a remodel. And we see the corner of that building at an angle, looks like it comes pretty close to the sidewalk. You see what is called A&amp;M Auto Parts, I think, which is set back further away, but then you see Yoga Source, which kind of comes forward, and then I think it's the NC Board Shop, which kind of comes off the corner and slips back, and then you see the Rebs and Development. But there's a lot of variations in setbacks, which kind of makes the street interesting. I'm trying to look at the Compass Building that the vice mayor suggested and make a comparison of its setback, being that that was the most, one of the most recent buildings approved, and compare it to the setback of this building. And it looks like where the green bike lanes are and where the sidewalk is, is further out, and it goes right on Shannon there, and then this new proposal, it looks like it lines up more evenly with that other sidewalk and that other bike lane. So I can understand what the traffic engineer said, Mr. Black, when he said, this is kind of a, a non-needed space, a non-needed lane. When it comes to the setback itself of the building and the articulation to the street, I think the fact that the second floor has been moved back is significant. So I'm, I'm inclined to approve it just the way it is. So I was going to make a motion that we overturn the planning commission's denial and approve the project. And I'm looking for a second. Councilmember Sehak?
I'll second, but I do want to clarify that it was a recommendation, so we're not overturning anything?
You are correct. Thank you.
Okay. And if I may, if I can add some comments to my second?
Yes, you may.
Okay. I think a couple of thoughts that I wanted to highlight. There was significant discussion regarding Safe Routes to School and the traffic improvements that are necessary. And so one of, it's a learning lesson for all of us, and this is, I believe, the first project since those, that master plan has, has been approved. And what I want to emphasize is that when we approved that, we knew that there were low-hanging fruit that we wanted. But overall, we also had an eye to the future of the Boulevard, and that we needed projects such as these to help offset the cost this was going to cost the town for those significant improvements, and we have an opportunity here to really provide for that. Does that mean that's the only reason I'm approving this? No. But what we've seen is that it's a plan development because of one exception with the setback, and if I'm a resident that's looking at the line of where that setback is with the added sidewalk, the added greenscape, and the added bike lane, will I know where that setback begins and where it doesn't? And I don't think so. And so I'm hopeful that with the improvements that come into play, with the added pedestrian activity that happens, it becomes more of what we envisioned for Los Gatos Boulevard of being pedestrian-friendly, and, and that whole area becomes, becomes exactly what we had planned for in, in the plans that we had approved a couple of years ago. One of the things I would ask, should this be approved, our staff, as, as this comes through fruition, is that with the construction management plan, again, it's heavily impacted, so let's see how we can utilize the breaks during the school. And if it, any construction, heavy construction is occurring during school hours, that there be at least one flag person, possibly two, that's there onsite when school is letting, when it's starting and when it's, and when school lets out. Again, the heavy traffic that's happening there, I just want to make sure that there's nothing that goes wrong. And when it does come back for architecture and site, that staff work with the architect to see if there's anything we can do to help improve the, that deck that's on that corner, that intersection. I understand with the setback on the second floor, it does provide a break in what one sees, but if there's any way to help break up that deck so it's not just an appearance of higher mass on that corner intersection, I think that would be helpful. So that's something that I asked the architect to work our, with our staff on.
We have a motion and a second. Vice Mayor?
So I am not going to be supporting the motion, not be, not because I don't want the improvement, I do want the improvement, but as I understand it, the reason for the reduced setback is an economic driver to make up for the cost of the improvement. So if I say, guess what, move your building back, and I'm going to waive your parking requirement, then in theory, I have solved that economic problem, at least in theory. So I would much rather give up parking and say, you know what, we're trying to make this safer for bikes and pedestrians, so one of the ways we're going to do that is by decreasing parking, because what I want to do is encourage multimodal transportation. So my solution would be to reduce the parking, not to keep the setback, because I think the setback is very important for how that street works.
Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Rennie. This is very interesting, and I'm sure that the applicant is not sitting there thinking that this is like a really interesting conversation. But this is very interesting, because the, the planning commission, and now the council, both bodies are dealing with, with an issue that we did not have to deal with before, and that's a Safe Routes to School. Everybody agrees that is a good thing. But now we're working with implementing that Safe Routes to School, and that is challenging. And at this corner, if you're going to take any corner in town where it's going to be the most challenging, this is it. But I, I think it's commendable that we are now making such a big effort, that the planning commission made such a big effort, that we have the Safe Routes to School, and also the applicant has gone through so many iterations over the years, and has worked so diligently to come forward with the project that fits our community and fits the location. Having said that, I agree with Ms. Jensen. I am not going to be supporting the motion, because I think that we could be giving an approval to this application that would be less problematic for our town, for the view sheds of the people who have to walk by there every day, or walk by there a lot. So all you would need to do is leave the setbacks where they are, reduce the parking by three parking spaces, and that would be a motion that I could support, and that I personally think would be much better for the town of Los Gatos. personally think would be much better for the town of Los Cattos.
Councilmember Rennie.
Thank you. So, it sounds like I get to be the swing vote, that's always fun. You know, I could probably go either, either way on this. As Councilmember Seok said, I wouldn't approve it just because we want to get the safe routes to school improvements, but I think that, that those are really important, and I want to thank the applicant for being willing to pay for those, because that's, that's going to be a real benefit. A big piece of the denial from the, the Planning Commission was they didn't like the safe routes to school improvement. I don't think they understood the loss of lane. When I read through the, the minutes, you know, they were worried about it making beach traffic worse, and this is a northbound lane, and beach traffic goes south, it's not even relevant. I can see on the map that, that extra lane, unless, you know, Magus and Loop doesn't have a light, so you'd have to back up traffic all the way from Blossom Hill to actually need that extra lane to maybe fit some cars that were turning off Roberts Road if there was a huge number of cars. I'm having trouble imagining when you'd ever need this lane, so I, I can't see denying it based on the loss of a lane that actually makes this intersection much more safe. So I, I don't deny it for, for that reason. I'm hearing lots of support for moving the building back and just eliminating spaces. I think three spaces gone out of 58 is, or even if it became five spaces, I think I agree that's a, a better solution. I'm assuming it's no big deal to move their, their building back, that they don't have to do a lot more design work, so I'm certainly willing to, I, I think I'm going to not support the motion in hopes of a better motion that will move the building back. I think it, I, I think I agree, it feels like it might be kind of sticking out on this corner, and to get it more in line with everything else, it's much better to, to reduce the parking requirement.
Councilmember Seok.
You know, when I, when I asked staff the question, I was also going 50/50, and so, you know, I could go either way. So I, I did second this motion. Mayor, if you would like to keep the motion, or if you'd like to amend it, what would you like to do?
Well, we, you can withdraw your second, and the motion will die, or we just vote, and the motion will probably die, and then there could be a new motion.
Okay.
All right, all in favor? Aye opposed?
No.
So the motion fails. Two to three. Councilmember Specter.
I will defer to the mayor, or I'll sign prepared to make a motion.
Of course.
Thank you. All right, I am going to move that we approve plan development, the plan development to rezone two properties, zone CH to CHPD, to allow for construction of a new commercial building. And I'm going to, my motion will, will include that the application be conditioned as proposed by staff, with the exception that we, that the plan development exception would apply to the three parking spaces, or reducing the parking spaces by three, and that the building not have the setback.
Councilmember Seok.
I'd like to second it. Would it be possible to add the two requests of staff, the construction management hours, to highlight when school is out, and also if they can look, work with the architect to see if there's a way to soften the inner, the second floor balcony on the intersection?
Excellent additions, and yes, I agree.
Okay, thank you. I'll second the motion.
Vice Mayor.
Through the mayor, to the maker of the motion. In listening to your motion, what I'm trying to understand is, are you concluding in the motion a condition that the building be moved back? So you are not only not approving the requested exception to the setback that's currently before us, but that you are asking the, that the building be moved back to the standard setback? Is that right?
That is included in my motion, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to ask a clarifying question. I don't know if there's been specific analysis as to whether or not it's going to be precisely three parking spaces. If it were to be more, I'm wondering if there's a way that we could allow for staff to craft the condition, so that way, if, you know, not more than five parking spaces, or whatever it is, I just, I'm not sure if, how precise the estimate of three was for this evening, and for us to have to come back to modify that condition to reduce even more parking spaces. I just put it out there that I think we'd want to make sure we had a condition that was clear about intent, but maybe had a maximum, so that way we have a little wiggle room as they will need to do some redesign.
Okay, mindful of that, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Specter.
Thank you. Considering staff's request, I would amend my motion to have the parking places reduced up to five. I'm a little concerned about going for big numbers, so I will do it up to five.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye opposed? None, it passes unanimously. I'm going to request we-
Through the mayor, I think we need to introduce the ordinance by title only, if we can have the clerk do that, and then we are also assuming the findings and adoption of the negative declaration as illustrated in the staff report.
Thank you. Ms. Niese.
An ordinance of the town, council of the town of Los Cattos, amending the town code affecting a zone change from CH to CHPD for property located at 16212 Los Cattos Boulevard, APNs 52306010 and 52306011.
Thank you. So, Councilmember Rennie.
Do we need another motion that covers the findings? Because I, I don't think-
I believe they were incorporated through staff, but if we could have another motion, that would be very good for the record. And that's on page 139, if it's the full one, or it's on page five of your staff report, which is adopting the ND-
Councilmember Specter.
I want to broaden my motion to also include that we, the motion includes all requisite findings.
And I agree.
All right. Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye opposed? None, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Tur. I'm going to request a five-minute break. We'll come back at about nine o'clock. We'll come back at about nine o'clock.